August 29, 2012, special meeting which is called for the purpose of conducting interviews of the finalist candidates for the Troy City Manager position. A roll call, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Pottam McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Quarantined. The candidate to be interviewed this morning is Mr. Jim Creach. The interview is expected to take about two hours. City council members have prepared approximately thirty questions in advance of the meeting, so the candidates should be prepared to answer to each question in an average of four minutes. City council members will take rotating turns in asking the questions. Members of the public will not be provided with a formal opportunity to ask the candidate questions, but City Council encourages the public to communicate the observations to the council members through email prior to the deliberations, which will take place on Thursday afternoon. There is also a public comment portion of the meeting, which is scheduled as the last item of business under the City Council Rules of Procedure. Mr. Creach, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Our first question is going to be asked by Councilman Doug Teetz.
Good morning. Can you please give us just kind of a brief synopsis in three minutes or less of your professional background and accomplishments?
Three minutes or less, okay. Well, I've worked in Oakland County seventeen of my twenty-five years here in the profession, and I've been a city manager, an acting city manager, an assistant city manager, administrative assistant, and a township manager during that length of time. I've worked in all aspects. Basically, I'm sort of a generalist. I've done just about every job in some way, shape, or form. In City of Oak Park, I kind of rotated around in assessing and clerk's office even a little bit, and basically out of city manager's office, did personnel, a lot of insurance. I had an insurance background. I also used to sell insurance, which is kind of how I got into that kind of area. I used to also be a short time as a pension administrator. So in Miami City, I was a city manager there, and I was the D.V.A. director, and department head for all aspects of the city, including the wastewater treatment plant, the DPW, Parks and Rec, and township. I'd done everything there as well. They walked in the door, and I'm the answer to the question. Some major things I've done there are some construction projects, water sewer projects ready to develop, and yeah.
Thank you very much.
A second question. Tell us what you've done in your past jobs to ensure that council members are informed with both the pros and cons of a project, so they have information needed to facilitate doing their jobs.
Of a project or just informed of?
How do you give information to a city council so that we can determine how to vote on a particular thing, in a nutshell?
Well, you know, I think written information. I provide written reports, obviously using the consultants as well for background information. Might be a work session, depending upon the size of it, and whether or not there's any bonding involved, if it's something that's relatively small. It depends upon the scope of the project, how much effort, I guess, would be, or how also how visible it, I guess, it is in the community. If it's something like a storage tank for a wastewater treatment plant, that would be, you know, probably pretty much a turnkey type thing, but you'd just be purchasing a set thing, a set, you know, something already designed and kind of off the shelf. If they're actually doing something in a road project or something of that nature involving the public, obviously, it involves a lot more. But as far as information on getting the consultants involved, reports, maybe even a work session, or a couple of work sessions.
Thank you. Next question. In what ways might government learn from free market successes? Describe any methodologies adopted from the private sector that you have applied in the public sector, and what worked and what didn't work?
Well, obviously, all municipalities are doing a lot of contracting out and taking advantage of, you know, economies of scale. We contract out with the Sheriff's Department, obviously, for lease services. We provide basically the same services you do in a city, except different ways in the township, and we do it with fewer staff, and we, basically with that, you lose control. You do, you, that's kind of the downside of that. You're kind of subject, there isn't a kind of backup to the Sheriff's Department issue. Form your own police department, for example, so that would be the alternative for a township. So, you know, that's kind of an example, I guess, of how, you know, you would use public sector, not with?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you provide an example of a time when you believed that council was wrong on an important issue? Tell us what the issue was and what you did, what was the end result?
I try to eliminate errors, and I kind of pride myself in doing that, and taking small steps and sort of, you know, I'm up to believe there's no such thing as a wrong decision, just bad timing. And I think rushing a decision or perhaps not presenting it correctly to the public or not getting that information out, I guess, in the right way is, the message itself is just as important as the act. And there have been a couple of things just in the past, in the recent past, I don't know if I actually want to get into them, but some projects relating to a dam removal project that's been kind of controversial in the township, even though it was pretty innocuous to think about, or to begin with, I should say, it was a fully funded, federally funded dam removal project that had some undesirable consequences and, obviously, the public perceived it negatively, and it affected relatively few property owners, but the property owners were very vocal. I don't know if I actually made a, they actually went against the recommendation, but they did sort of go with the recommendation of the consultant, or not exactly consultant, the person who was, the entity that was going forward with the grant application and the project, and I guess that was the only thing I could come up right off the top of my head right now.
Okay. Me, I'd go just a little bit farther. Jim, you've said that there can be a decision, it's not necessarily right or wrong, it may be the wrong time for that particular decision. The answers that I've heard tend to indicate not an active pursuit by city manager or contact, engagement with the council to create a situation in order to counsel them on the particular idea, and didn't really hear the methodologies you would use to speak to the council on an issue like this.
Well, I think that, really, I don't really know how to respond to that. The?
If I painted a scenario, would that help a little bit?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay. Let's say the city council said, "We should have merry-go-round in the middle of Big Beaver out here," and that was their vote, or not, their vote, that's the way they want to proceed, and you thought, in your mind, "That's expense that is, we really can't handle, that's a service maybe the government shouldn't be providing," and that's your feeling. Not to embarrass the council, what one or two steps would you take to give them your opinion at that particular point?
Well, obviously, I would offer my opinion, plus I'd offer the opinion of others that are also well-respected by the council. I think where the message comes from is very, very important, so, you know, that's how I would treat that, obviously. Spending public dollars, I guess, for a private purpose, that's kind of, that's kind of a gray issue with a lot of city councils and boards, and I think that, you know, that can, because everybody thinks, "Well, I'm the public too," but if it's only benefiting four people, and you're spending all the taxpayers' dollars, and it can be several hundred thousand dollars for those four people, that's really not a public purpose, in my estimation, and that's kind of what they have to realize, that it becomes a more generic or useful wide improvement than, you know, it's obviously not justified, or if it's grant-eligible, that's another thing that, that kind of, you know, if the grant pays for its financial portion of it, but?
That's good. Thank you. Do you want to take a drink?
Yes.
Good morning. Could you provide examples of actions you have taken in the past to build a cohesive team, convene respect with department heads and direct reports, and why you do that? Could you explain what worked for you, what didn't work for you, and maybe answer why or why not that didn't work and work for you?
Well, I think that being very participative, actually understanding what everybody does and not, you know, have a sort of detached view of things, I think, is important. You should understand what they do and respect the importance of what they do, and understand the issues that they have with personnel or equipment, or whatever it might be, whatever their demands might be, or what their requests or needs might be for accomplishing whatever goal that needs to be accomplished. What doesn't work for you, if you're not, if you just sort of like, okay, just leave it to them. I think that, I think oversight is very important. You just can't, I, obviously, there's a level of trust that you have to have with your department heads as well, that, you know, that they can follow through, and they are good staff, they are qualified, that they're operating within the scope of their, that they're comfortable with, and have some experience and responsibility that they're able to work in. So, that's kind of it, just basically being engaged with them, understanding what it is they're doing, and understanding the project, and so that, you know, you're able to empathize with what they're going through.
Process improvement and continuous improvement generally require a long-term commitment in order to institutionalize change within the organization. Tell us how you have sustained a long-term emphasis on improvement so they become lasting improvements.
Lasting improvements. You know, I think that everything is sort of tied with money. If you've got a money stream to make improvements, I think that that's where to start from. I've worked in the township, basically, to identify funding sources and to separate and dedicate funding sources. One of the things that the electorate is comfortable with is if you're, you are, if they're voting for a millage or funds to go specifically towards a specific thing, they know that those monies can only be used and are only going to be used for that purpose. That sort of establishes that funding basis, whether it's roads, or police, or fire, fire equipment, whatever it might be. I think that the emphasis is that everything goes into a general fund, you know, I pay my taxes, you decide how it's going to be debbied up, and, you know, you should have enough money, you had enough money last year. Obviously, you know, that's, that's not, not always, doesn't always work. As far as maintaining the infrastructure, just looking through the city here and the way that they do things, or the way you do things, it's very, very, very clear to me that you're in, you're in, I'm sorry, you are investing in the future, that you are, that the emphasis here is on the maintenance of the infrastructure. I see projects going on, and road projects that, you know, you might, in a lot of municipalities, I'm waiting for a few years. I went to Lake Orion for many years on my drive-in, and they finally got to the downtown, but it could have been done easily five, six, seven years before that, and not, but they had, obviously, funding issues and priorities, and I think that, you know, planning those things out is something that everyone should strive for, and, you know, is good, good useful planning.
Is there any way you can be a little more specific as to what you believe the planning-out method would be, or something you have employed?
Well, yeah, I've, obviously, done CIP programs, and I project out, I do my budgeting, because I do the budgeting in the township, and most places I've been. Projecting out ten years, revenue expenditures, is the normal course of what I do, based upon, you know, CIPs, what CIP program, what we're planning on buying, fire equipment, or building improvements and things of that nature. We kind of save little pockets of money and then expend them. I try very, very conservative regarding finances and bonding and things of that nature, and I've, we've always paid off bonds as quickly as possible, and I've got a past history of doing that in Oakland Township, and so it's something that, that's kind of the way that we would handle that.
When you apply the techniques with the CIP program, you applied it to internal operations, the way things are done, or concepts within the organization, other than the, let's say, the physical items that are usually in a CIP, whether it is a development of personnel or?
Well, obviously, if you're, if you're dealing with those things on an internal basis, say a sidewalk program or something of that nature, obviously, you want to have people who are good in flat work that you're going to have on staff. That's, if you're planning on doing internally instead of, you know, contracting it out, but as far as if that's what you're kind of looking to, good qualified staff is obviously where you want to start from.
Could you give us several examples of the types of negotiations you have done? Were you a direct participant in negotiations or a third-party facilitator? And what were the issues? It's a fourteen-part question. What steps or processes did you follow to reach the agreement, and which party won, and why?
Which party won? Oh, I'm, you know, I'm all over with this. Are you talking about basically major negotiations and things of that nature? Obviously, I've negotiated with Teamsters, and I've been involved with 312 arbitration, ABSME, local police units. The issues are everything from manning pensions, compensation. Commonly with 312 arbitration, you're selling a contract that's actually expired, which is kind of like looking at extending it to, you know, current timeframe if you possibly can. But, yeah, all aspects of interest arbitration, or interest negotiations, and, like I said, I've been through 312 arbitration with Public Safety, and, you know, Park was kind of a, kind of a traumatic experience, but I was very, very new in the business at that time. And I'd been the lead negotiator for all the, all the units that I've negotiated with. I mean, I've been the person negotiating, and sitting across the table from the business agent or the negotiator.
Thank you. Councilman Teetz?
Managers often have vexing problems that defy the traditional problem-solving methods. Can you tell us about a time when you employed your creative talents to solve an administrative problem? If you could just be specific and perhaps give an example, and then, you know, what did you do?
Hmm, that's a creative method to solve something that, well, one of the things in Oakland Township, it's kind of a minor, if you think about it, is that they've spent years and years and years improving gravel roads, and what the road commission solving that problem would be putting additional gravel on the roads, which actually had really no impact, but, you know, it had some improvement, but really, for the money spent, it didn't really have any long-term event, effect. And so, one of the things that I came up with was a limestone program, so we're replacing the, we're putting a four-inch layer of limestone on the roads. It costs about two to three times as much as gravel would cost to put on the road, but has a much better effect, has a long-term effect. It becomes the new road surface. I don't know why in the many, many years previous to that that I hadn't come up with that, but I'd seen it in up north and other places, and it does replace work. Of course, the road commission loves great roads, and loves to employ people, and obviously it requires less maintenance, and the residents all love it, and has a hard surface. It's a little harder to maintain, you can't really grade it when it's bone-dry because it'll break the equipment, but if there's a little bit of moisture in it, and so there's a little bit, a bit more work as far as the maintenance, but it requires a lot less maintenance, and has a much better road surface, so the road surface is more reliable.
So, what you're saying, for that solution, that basically an out-of-the-box solution, something that you observed someplace else and decided to apply it here, or in your case, or haven't?
Yeah, it was, we, it was a very slow, I, the road commission did not want to do it, obviously, the road commission controls the roads in the township, and so it was something that they wanted to, I had to experiment in a small place to see that they would actually want to do it, actually, it's their roads, and, but we're paying for the improvement. So, that was just, I don't know, just something that came out of, but it's kind of creative, and so I think it comes to mind right now.
From time to time, actions occur which damage the public's confidence in city government.
Give us an example of how this has happened, and tell us how you handle it.
Well, I, there's been a few things going on in the township regarding rezoning referendums, and what's happened is the township board, at this point, seems to, any time that there's a rezoning request come forward, because of the success of specifically one referendum, that the threat of another referendum is always on the horizon, and there is another rezoning on the books right now, and there is a referendum petition being circulated, and how I've handled this, I guess, and, basically, the township is addressing the issue lawfully, you know, the citizens seem to think that the township should, township board should be acting in a way that they want them to, not that the ordinances or the law or their duty dictates, and basically, getting that information out to the public, letting them know that this is the zoning ordinance, this is the process, these are the standards, that they are reasonably meeting those standards, that, and educating them. It doesn't stop the public, but it does in some way insulate the board that their actions are lawful and just and, as they should be.
Please provide an example of a complex financial project for which you were responsible. What made it complex? What was your specific role in the process? And what was the most difficult part for you?
A complex financial?
Project?
Project. Okay, this involves another development. This is an intersection project at, actually, at Silver Bell and Adams. This negotiation with a developer for settlement of a lawsuit regarding development of property. In conjunction with that, he was to contribute towards improvements in the adjacent areas based upon a number of units that were actually developed in the property. My role is working through the negotiation, coming up with the adjust number amount that would facilitate the construction of the intersection, improving the intersection, and looking for additional grant fund monies to leverage the amount that we would have for the participation of, or for the improvement, I should say. It was kind of complex as far as the negotiation of the development agreement and how that was going to work out. Luckily, it developed very quickly in eighteen months. One of the things that was kind of out there a little bit is that this didn't develop immediately or didn't develop, developed over a long period of time, but it was early in 2000, and so it worked pretty well.
Thank you.
Can you tell us your methods that you use in a strategic planning process, and use in strategic planning and acquisitions?
My methods or?
Methods used in strategic planning, so I guess you touched a little bit about it in terms of budgeting, but what other ideas or tools would you utilize to help us in our strategic planning?
Well, I think, you know, obviously, want to identify goals, and what is that, you know, the city needs to accomplish. I think that, as I said, I think, I think the answers are all out there, it's just, you know, making the choices at this point. The, I think that, you know, identify the objectives and how you're going to accomplish those, and we're breaking apart into, you know, specific duties and specific parts, compartmentalize them, and accomplishing those towards, towards the specific goals that you're, that you're, that you're trying to accomplish. I mean, I, the methodology is just a logical progression in my mind. I don't know how specific you want me to be regarding anything that I've done, but, you know, that's kind of the way I operate anyway, so.
Could you please describe actions you have taken in the past to step?
And one more.
Ready to get another cup of coffee?
Nine o'clock in the morning, stop.
Usually have two by now. Could you please describe actions you've taken in the past to establish a sound relationship with council, city staff, and the community, and could you provide one example of each of those groups, if you could, please?
Staff, okay. Well, what I, what I commonly do or have done in the past is, I have lots of written letters to the, I write a memo every week or couple of weeks, depending upon the situation and what's going on, to the, to the city council about everything that I'm going on, that I'm doing, that staff is involved with, things they should be aware of. If there's things more immediate, then they get emails, or even phone calls, you know, just to keep an open line of communication with the staff, with staff as well. Basically, they get the same letter that I send out to the board, so they're in on what's going on, I'm not, you know, if they have any questions, and I, you know, they can see that they're written about in there as well, because their board is being updated on very specific activities, whatever's going on. And, you know, I meet regularly with homeowners associations, done presentations on things regarding Detroit Water, been a major issue in the township for, I don't know, fifteen or twenty years, I guess, at this point. The plan to drag a ninety-six inch main across the township and over to, over to Giddings Road and solve a lot of problems in Auburn Hills and Rochester Hills, and Barres Play, and then going up I-75 to Flint, it's like a billion-dollar project, and actually, I have the plans for it in my office, about ten million dollars worth of engineering plans done by BLZ, that Victor Mercado and Kwame Kilpatrick and things going on in Detroit never sort of materialized, is now off their, off their capital improvement plan. So, you know, keeping the public involved and, and... So, you know, keeping the, the public involved and, and, because the expectation was Detroit Water was coming, and we always had proffered that it was going to be done, and that it was becoming the future, and letting them know that it looks like it's off the tables or we're looking at some other alternatives, maybe bringing in, for bringing west or the east, or, I'm sorry, the, uh, the west or the south, or, uh, the Atlas Branch there potentially, or, um, you know, doing our own water system. So, it's just, you know, keeping, keeping the public involved with that.
This is moving on quite well. It's good. Take another drink. Take a breath there. We're just drilling you so fast.
Yeah.
That's good. Jim, what do you believe are the key measures of the financial health of the city? And once you tell us what you believe those key measurements are, how do you monitor these factors and how do you communicate them to the city council?
Well, obviously, you want to, you want to look at what your obligations are regarding debt, what your revenues are, what your expectations for revenues are, what your growth's potentially going to be, um, what, and reactions are happening to state, regarding state shared revenues and things of that nature. I mean, there's, there's a projection and basically numbers and, and, uh, spreadsheets and, uh, providing that information in some clear form that is understandable to everyone. Uh, again, there's, there's, uh, you know, you want to also cite credible sources, uh, in, in your organization that would, uh, also verify, you know, your, your projections and what you think is going to be happening. So, it's just, uh, just along those lines. I'm sorry, I'm not taking my four minutes in my, so. I didn't think I'd be, no, no way it was going to be two hours, but, I don't, I don't talk that much.
Can I just be a little more specific?
Sure.
In some businesses, uh, cities I see, you have like key measurement indicators, something that you might chart or graph or something that folks have, that gives a snapshot. Is there anything you can think of that would be beneficial to the council in summary form or snapshot rather than just the budget projections and so forth that you could allude to that you've used in the past, just to show the, uh, the financial health of the city without reading the whole budget and so forth? Just the key things you would point out?
Yeah, I do a, I do a, I do a summary, um, that is like ten pages that, uh, basically has all the funds, uh, there's charts and basically, it, it sort of groups categories of expenditures and revenues together so that you can just look at the one page and see where we're at and all the past, and, uh, I, I carry quite, quite a bit of the past, uh, four or five, six years, uh, so that you can see the, the trend and then, obviously, the current budget and proposed budget.
Okay.
Councilman Campbell?
What experience have you had with revitalization efforts, including financing?
Um, not, well, obviously, in the, in the city of Fenton, we did a large DDA project, uh, senior high-rise parking, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of improvement there, applied for grants, uh, to, uh, what was ICET at the time, putting through, uh, actually, all, all developed after, uh, after I left. Also negotiated agreement with, uh, Kmart Corporation, I don't know that, uh, for the, uh, Sil, Civil Lake Village, which is the Owen Road, uh, US 23 exchange, and all that development goes in there, driven by US 23 and Owen Road exit. Um, so, it, that, that kind of development, also, we did, uh, some improvements. There was a, a fear of downtown, uh, actually, North Leroy in, in Fenton that was, um, going to suffer because of the Civil Lake Village development, so we dedicated some funding, had some funds, uh, through grants for improvements in that area as well and, uh, sort of revitalized that area also revitalized as well. So, a lot, a lot in Fenton and, uh, some key areas, uh, the North Leroy section, uh, downtown, the Rough Air Project, uh, was a, was a big project. Also, in Emily City, we did a, applied for grants regarding facade program, um, and, uh, some, some three O two cleanup. In Emily City, it seemed at, at one point in time that there was a gas station on every corner. I don't, uh, don't exactly know how that happened. I think that, uh, it's a large farming community. I think that they sent the sun into, you know, I guess, run a gas station. So, it seemed, you know, you could see remnants everywhere, and there was, there were some issues. Luckily, we had Detroit Water there, so it wasn't, uh, too big of an issue with the water supply, but, um, so we, uh, had some sites there, and we cleaned those up.
Jim, uh, can you describe a situation where you were tempted to explore a new alternative, but realized that the payback to the organization was not sufficient? And what led you to that conclusion? If that seems vague, I'll give you an example.
Where the payback was...
It wasn't sufficient for the amount of effort, effort cost?
Well, I'm going to have a hard time because usually I sort of dismiss those and go on to something else, so I, I sort of...
Let me give you a second to think. Uh, let's say, uh, I thought I would like to, uh, utilize more space in the city hall, and yet, uh, by the time I was finished, I would realize, I realized the, the architectural costs, the construction costs were just absolutely huge to revamp the building. I backed off on it.
No, I, I, I guess I, yeah, I understand that. I, we, uh, we have the, uh, Pink Creek Cider Mill Building is now, uh, now, now a township building, and, uh, at one time, the, uh, the township was thinking about having that be the city hall, and, uh, obviously, the, the funds for that didn't really justify that. There was the cost of the building and revamping the building and, um, really didn't, the space was a little bit too cut up. We didn't have a large enough, um, council chamber, et cetera. Subsequent to that, the, uh, the owner decided to donate the building, and so, suddenly became a little more viable. We didn't need the new city hall because we had a new city hall at that point, but we did utilize the building. The Parks Recreation Commission has expanded greatly, and, uh, we also had, uh, need for the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, the Historic District Commission, and all needing space, and plus, there's a little, um, vendor there that we want to keep going. So, there's, there's a, a concessionaire that sells cider and donuts and has hot dogs and whatever, a lot of space. They, uh, they pay a little bit in the concessionaire agreement towards the, uh, the cost of the building, and then the other funds, the, which are outside funds, the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, the, the Historic District Commission, all pay towards, towards the building. So, the building by itself with this, uh, with this additional funding, um, is, is self-sufficient regarding all the, uh, all the utilities, and, uh, they, obviously, not the ongoing maintenance or anything like that, but offsets the cost of it, so it became very cost-efficient. We save up a little pot of money, pay a great deal of cash, I think it's a million and two, outside of the, like, two million and two. So, that's, I guess that's one example. Thanks for the prompting there.
I think people will be very curious about this question. Imagine the city council is severely split on most every issue, and the situation is worsening. You can't get anything accomplished because of the blocking and the tightrope between different factions. How would you handle the situation and, and why, kind of methodology?
Well, I, I think you really have to kind of rise above the fray and, and look at the, the merits of the situation and sort of divorce politics from the, um, from the issue at hand, and you want to make sure that, you know, it's identified as, the issue is identified, and the, uh, the merits are quantifiable, if that's possible, um, so that it's very apparent that, what, what the decision would, would be. If, uh, obviously, if there's no production, I, I mean, uh, obviously, there's, there's an odd number, so it's going to be a vote one way or the other unless somebody abstains. Um, so, there, there, there will be a vote. Uh, I don't know if not getting something done is kind of the question because there, there would be an ultimate decision. Anyway, that's, that's kind of...
Describe a time when you felt it was important for your city to change direction of thinking, and you personally championed this change. What did you do? Were you successful and why are you on that?
Situation, uh, uh, again, I, I hate to go back to the same example, but, uh, in, in the township, there was a, um, and, and it, it's not just in, in this township, but a lot of townships is that they, the general fund subsidize other funds, so they, the, the public has the perception that they are not, uh, that the money that they're having towards the millage, for example, there's one mill that goes for public safety, but that supports both the police and the fire. Obviously, and, and, and the general fund is subsidizing all of those funds. And so, the, what I did there is, is, is in the township, just to make all the funds self-sufficient, so that the, the operations of all the funds were separate and distinct, and the, the public, uh, would determine that, or have, would have come to the conclusion that they're all, um, the money that they're spending is, is towards that, that specific service. So, uh, yeah, that's, uh, I guess, one of the things that, that comes to mind. I probably keep them up with a couple other, uh, things that I've supported. I, I think recent, well, not too recently, but, uh, we went through a recent, uh, last update was recent, but back in two thousand and five, we did a, a master plan update. There was, uh, a little bit of aversion to, to doing that at that time, even though the, the development was sort of, uh, not, uh, not at a standstill, but was, but was slowing down, and there was a time to really take care of some of this stuff. The, the old master plan was based upon a, uh, carrying capacity of the soils of the land based upon sanitary sewer or based upon septic tanks, which obviously is a, you know, old planning, uh, methodology from the nineteen sixties. And they sort of carried that forward into the nineties and actually the early two thousands. It wasn't based upon current planning methods, and, uh, I had some convincing to, to do with the, um, city council, or the township board and the, um, planning commission to take, take those steps. This was something that was necessary, that the developers at that point were, were looking and kind of laughing at, at what we had, had in place, and, you know, nobody actually thought anything about it. And so, we have to massively, uh, the planning documents and bring them all up to date so that they are, you know, current and using current methodologies and planning methods. Just a couple of things. That should make up some of the four minutes that I left.
Thank you, Mr. Creage. What trends are emerging in American society that promise to significantly influence city management and operations in the coming decade? As city manager, how would you prepare the Troy city government to cope with these trends?
Um, well, that's kind of an open question. There's lots of trends out. Uh, the, uh, social media, uh, obviously, is a, is a, is a major component in, in how, uh, how that's being treated, and, and I think that it's kind of the policies and, and, I guess, the actions of the city councils and, uh, some cohesiveness regarding how, how, how the social media is treated. Um, I see, I see much more downside than upside, but obviously, it is something that is a demand and is something that's necessary that, uh, is, is going to have to be, uh, dealt with and, uh, handled properly, uh, by city councils. Uh, maybe there's, there's trends in, in less funding for, from the states, uh, and, hopefully, that, that making, uh, the state seems to be separating. I'm not sure exactly what's happening with state shared revenue, but they keep on going back and forth with regards to, uh, current legislation and what they plan on doing. Uh, this, the state is kind of in a known, uh, in my estimation with, uh, a lot of things that are going on, hopefully, with the economy turning around. I think that uncertainty is a, a real erosion as, as far as confidence, and I think that hopefully, we'll have some certainty with regards to funding from the state and, uh, and, and the future.
Jim, can I pursue that just a little bit? If, if a trend that we're in or trend that we're moving toward is uncertainty, uh, what impact would you see upon the city and what should the city do in relation to that if the uncertainty that you're describing, which is true, that the state, uh, has reduced their support or maybe has not fulfilled their obligations to return monies to the cities or fulfill their obligations to support the cities in the way it was originally prescribed and keep putting this additional burden on the cities? Is there anything there that you see that the city can do to deal with that or just be cognizant of it?
I, I, I think you have to be cognizant of it. I think you also basically have to not count on it. Um, there's, there's a lot of, uh, the statutory state shared revenue, I, is, is something that I don't think should be just sort of a, you know, extra money, found money now in the budget because of, uh, of, uh, of what the possibilities are of the state. I, I, I think that, uh, obviously, you have to take it on, the insurance on a year-by-year basis on what they, what, how the state is operating, what they plan on doing, but the shifting of, and changing the pot and how the, the pie is, is divided up is, is what the question I have as far as, uh, as far as state share revenue. Townships, for the most part, except the very largest ones, don't get statutory, they only get constitutional, and so, unless they change the constitution, I know that, you know, I'm going to get my one point three percent now, or some version thereof. Obviously, there's factors that, uh, you know, very bad, but, uh, so I, I just think that you, you have to be cognizant of, of what reality is and, and sort of adjust to that. And, and the uncertainty is, is, obviously, can affect projections and, and things of that nature, but...
You didn't say, but it sounded like you were talking about the, uh, unfair formulas that the state uses for distribution.
Yes, yes. Yeah, to give Detroit half, read out the top, that's... I don't know how that ever came to be, I forgot.
Okay, the next question has multiple, multiple parts as well, so, um, we would like you to describe a sensitive issue that you've dealt with in correcting a subordinate. What made that issue so sensitive? What factors did you have to consider when dealing with it? Describe the process that you used to correct the problem and tell us what the outcome ultimately was.
Sensitive issue and disciplining a subordinate?
Um, well, it says here correcting a subordinate, but I think that this may have been modified a little bit from a more specific fact pattern, so, um, correcting or disciplining would be fine. There's one that you can think of.
Unfortunately, I have one that comes to my mind and I don't want to talk about it, especially on camera. Yeah. Um, I'm trying to think of another one that would be less...
If you can't give a specific example, I mean, if you can just let us know how you dealt with it, I think a little bit more generally.
Well, it, uh, interdetermination. Um, it had to do with a, you know, I can't really describe it because if I go into any detail, um...
Perhaps, perhaps I can help you with an example. Have you ever worked with an employee that had a, a very strong attitude? Uh, he was your subordinate, had been around a long time, and, uh, was difficult to, uh, work with and...
Actually, I haven't had that experience. Mike, you've been around a lot more.
I thought, I was drawing about something you dealt with.
I have no idea about... No, actually, it had to do with, uh... Inappropriate behavior of a female firefighter. I don't remember what I'm going through. I know. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I defer here, but I, I, that's the only thing that really pops into my mind, and I'm trying to, trying to come up with another example. Another subordinate, a subordinate that acted inappropriately, it had to be corrected. Um, see, I, I dealt through the super, uh, channel supervision, usually, you know, it's usually somebody lower end, it's not an department head that I'm dealing with. I've, trying to think... I'm trying to think whether, I don't think I've ever fired a department head. I've had, oh, well, geez. When I was in Fenton, I had a, a building official that, and building officials tend to be lightning rods, anyway. And it was just an overall demand, that, you know, that, that something done regarding his behavior, which for all, I, I, you know, trying to pin a specific thing that was done. Obviously, it was a lot of conjecture, a lot of hearsay, nothing specific, nothing could be really pinned that on him specifically that was done wrong. There was not any inappropriate behavior, rumors of things, but everything was, was patently false, and, and basically, you know, he basically had to be exonerated, I think, that, and the behavior, I just, I just told him to basically stop any sort of behavior relating to that, that, just to assuage sort of the, the appearance that, you know, something would be inappropriate. So, it was just, you know, just counseling. I'm, I'm sorry, it's sort of a, like I said, I had this one thing that came into my mind and drove out every other example I could think of.
Counselor Slade?
I think that's probably good, that you haven't had to deal with those kinds of issues. This is an easier question. Actually, what is your view on the role of a city manager in the organization? And how would you view the relationship between the city manager and the city council?
Well, I, I, I work for the elected, elected body, and my role is to, is, is to portray to the city council, the, the, I don't see the question, I'm thinking about it here. Basically, my, my perception of, of things that need to be done, some priorities, and obviously, the, the city council's going to have an idea as, as to what those items are as well. The, the city manager should portray the, what the positions of the city council are, and fairly and accurately, without bias, and, you know, keep, keep the city in, in good financial straits, and, and do share a duty to, to make sure that, that all that happens. I mean, I'm, I'm, sorry, I don't, it wasn't a very eloquent presentation, but...
Jim, you often have to work cooperatively with adjoining governmental jurisdictions. Can you give us an example of a constructive partnership with another city, or a township, a district, or a county, what you have initiated or been involved with?
Well, that's, that's pretty easy, because most, most things that the township does are on a cooperative basis. We previously had dispatch services through Rochester Hills, and they went to Oakland County as well as us. We've got the older person's commission, we helped with the, we had $2.5 million of their debt, we're paying that off this October, so, general obligation on one of the tax levies, so it's just separate millage on your tax bill, and that's going to be off, I think DIA is going to make that up, but I don't know if anybody's going to appreciate that. We've also, the Rochester Hills Library, we're a partner in that, we have a millage that helps support their operation. Got, you know, just, we work with other Rochester organizations, like the Rochester Youth Assistance Association, just a lot of things that we work with, joining municipalities through Rochester, and Rochester Hills, and Oakland County mostly, mostly to our south. We don't go over to Auburn Hills too much, or Oregon.
Okay. It's good. Can you provide us an example of what you've done in your most recent current role to manage the county's budgets, in the unknown to current economic times? And what specifically have you done to ensure realistic forecasts and projections?
Oh, well, I think I kind of previously described all that. Obviously, you've, I've been very conservative with the finances of the township, we were approved Triple A credit rating in 2008, and that was reaffirmed in, in 2001. We've separated the millages, and have dedicated millages for specific services, all the funds are self, self-sufficient. The general fund is, serves as a full faith and credit of the backing of all the funds and all the debt, and backs everything up. And so, we've, you know, and I'd, we projected out, again, 10 years, what the normal production is. I've got numbers from Parks and Recreation, which has their own separate dedicated millages for open space preservation and their operations, and they've got a separate electric board as well, that I work with, and I work with a while with. So, you know, just, just on, on those projections and along those lines, that's how I would do it.
A follow-up on that. You indicated that sometime, either last night or today, I'm not sure when, that your current community really didn't feel much of a negative impact when the integrated recession. So, without that impact, I would imagine that hasn't really changed your forecasts or projections very much?
Well, the, the downturn, obviously, in the assessments, but there was, there was more than adequate fund balance. The operationally, we had a large S on the top every year, that, so, that 30% that everybody took on their assessments didn't impact any, any, any of the individual funds. There was an impact to the, the fire fund, that was pretty close, but the general fund paid off the existing debt for that, so there was about a $360,000 electric debt payment every year, that the fund would have to subsidize, but the general fund paid that off, and so the operationally, now, the operational millages pay for them, pay for the fire services.
This is a pretty specific question, you may not be able to answer. What is your current total budget?
Current total budget, all the funds? I have the 6.6 mills that we levy, there's, I think it's around, plus state share revenue, probably about eight and a half million.
Do you know your fund balance off the top here?
But previously, the general fund was six million, and there was, you know, because we levy 10 months into the year, you have to keep a substantial fund balance, but all the other funds are at least 100% of expenditures, you know. So, there's probably at least, like, three million dollars, there's two and a half million dollars in the public, in the police fund, and there's probably a million and a half dollars starting the year, and then, so there's probably, I don't know, probably about 14, 14 million?
Okay. Can you tell us about a time, when reflecting back, you feel you spent too much time gathering facts, and working through the details, which delayed your decision-making process? I'll add to that. Oftentimes, when I make decisions, I realize I can never have 100% of the information. Somewhere along the line, depending upon the importance, or the timeframe you have to work within, maybe 60% of the information is all you can gather. Based on what I just said, can you give me an answer to that?
Um, hmm. How much is too much, and how much is enough? That's always kind of the...
Let's see, when you, you felt you got bogged down in the work, instead of getting to the decision?
There, there are a lot of planning studies and things like that. We kind of undertook the Goodison Study, which was a study of downtown Goodison, I don't know if this is specifically on point, but in planning, you can sort of expand, and expand, and expand, you know, what you're, what you're planning on do, sort of, on doing, so it's sort of a moving target with regards to your, your outcome. And surveys, and meetings, and, you know, obviously, how much is, how much is enough so that you have a consensus as to a direction, as to where you're going to go? Obviously, in, in the beginning process, you have an idea, and so, the expenditure of those funds is sort of just, just backing up coming conclusions that you think you're going to come to at the beginning, so, you know, I guess, in a perfect world, you can bypass all of that, and just do what you think should be done, but obviously, you have the democratic process, and you want to make sure that everybody's on board with what you're doing, and it's on, and the money's going to be spent efficiently, and everybody's okay with how you're doing things. I mean, I don't know if that's on point, I'm, I'm trying, I'm struggling, struggling to come up with an example, and suppose that...
Yeah, I'm just trying to nail down, you know, efficient cut bait type of an answer, you know, when do you, when do you cut it off, and take the risk, and then go for it?
Oh, I don't know if there is a good answer for that. Depends on the situation, yeah.
Philosophy.
Depends on the situation.
Mr. Creed, it's the approval of council, it seems like this would be a good time to take a break?
Okay.
Okay. Five minutes?
Five minutes, all right. I plan on intermission, but...